Board of Education meeting in order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendments. Add item C P C two, recognition of Garden City High School student Lindy Billbury for being selected to serve as state Future Farmers of America president for the thirteen, fourteen school year. Additional certified classified personnel actions, item E three, and remove item E five B law enforcement officer assignment.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. At this point, before we go forward, I did have some comments I wanted to make before we move ahead to reorganizing our board for the next year. I'd like to take a moment to look back at some of the many issues and events that have taken place and that our board has addressed this past year. They've included opening and dedicating our new Garden City High School, a ninety-two million dollar project, implementing a one-to-one iPad program at Garden City High School, celebrating the selection of Garden City High School as a national Blue Ribbon School, opening Horace J. Good Middle School in our former high school, A. Hubert Elementary School in our former middle school, and Garfield Early Childhood Center in a former elementary school, as well as all of the associated moves of staff, furniture, equipment, and supplies in the renovation and remodeling of space to accommodate its new uses. We dedicated the school and spaces within schools in honor of educators. Our former high school was named Horace J. Good Middle School in honor of Dr. Horace Good, a former superintendent in Garden City. The Kenneth Henderson Middle School Gymnasium was named Lori K. Peaster Gymnasium in honor of Ms. Lori Peaster, a former principal at the school. And Horace J. Good Middle School Courtyard was named Norman S. Clark Courtyard in honor of Mr. Norman Clark, a former teacher at A. Hubert Middle School. Sadly, we also said goodbye to several of our school namesakes, Dr. Horace Good and Ms. Bernadine Seitz. We were honored to have been with us for so long and are pleased to be able to remember them through the schools that bear their names. And we saw our students and staff garner many, many state and national awards. We considered many issues dealing with our schools, from first grade readiness to middle school boundaries. And we also contributed to the overall growth and development of Garden City in our consideration of the second entrance at Garden City High School through residential development, a campus avenue apartment development project, and tax abatement for business development in Garden City. These are just a few of the many issues we have addressed this past year alone. We had a very busy year, and I would like to thank everyone, every board member, all of the administrators and staff, as well as the students, parents, and community members for their hard work in looking at all sides of these issues when we address them so that we could make the best decision possible for the district and the community. Thank you also for allowing me to serve as your Board of Education president this past year. I've learned a lot from this experience and gained a new perspective on the issues we face as Board of Education members, and I feel that I'll be a better board member in the future because of serving in this position. As you all are aware, we've had an exciting and challenging year, but I believe that together we have moved our district forward and have made a great difference in the lives of our students and in our community as a whole. Thank you again. Prior to proceeding to nominations for board leadership positions, I'd like to request that prior to any motion to close nominations, all board members who would like to nominate themselves or another board member have an opportunity to speak and to discuss this matter if they so desire. And that being said, I'd like to declare that nominations for the office of Board of Education president are now in order. Are there any nominations for the Board of Education president position?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Tom Flack for this position.
Are there any other nominations? It appears that we have one nomination for the position of Board of Education president.
Madam President, I approve the nomination. Cease.
Okay, is there a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of closing nominations, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nominations for Board of Education president are closed. We'll now proceed with voting on this position. All of those in favor of Tom Flack for as Board of Education president, please raise your hand. Any opposed, say yes.
Alex is opposed. She's opposed to other issues.
It appears we do have a new Board of Education president. Congratulations, and I now hand over the question.
Thank you.
This time, I will vote for nominations for the position of Vice President of Board of Education.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Lori Hopkins for the class chair position.
I'd like to nominate Tim Cruz.
Okay. Three other nominations. This time, either one of you would you like to say, make some comments?
Sure.
Well, I respect Lori a great deal. She's mentored me these past two years and encouraged me to take leadership roles, not only on the board, but through the state. Been able to learn through that. Being vice president would allow me to grow and grow as a board member, give me a better opportunity to understand the leadership roles. I've been on the board for two years now. I attended every meeting. I haven't missed any meetings. I arrive thirty minutes early to prepare and make sure I know what's before us, and I would really like to have the opportunity. I think it's a position that we should all have the opportunity, but either way, I know Lori will do a good job. She has a path. I would like to have that opportunity.
I really, I'd like to echo what Jean said with her closing remarks as Board President, that serving in a leadership role, either as vice chair or president, is an amazing opportunity to learn and become a more vested board member. And going through that process before has made me even more committed to this process, to this administration, to this community. And I'm anxious and more than willing to serve in that capacity again. I found that role in the past rewarding and very fulfilling. I also think Tim would do a good job as well, so I have reservations on either one of us serving in the role.
I did have some comments also. I would just like to say that I think we're fortunate that all of our board members work very hard to inform themselves of the issues that we address and to make the best decisions possible for our district and our community, and that any of the board members would do a great job in any of the leadership positions. I have great confidence in all of you. I also believe it's important for the board to have as much breadth of experience as possible across all of the board members, so that regardless of what the future holds, our board as a whole remains very strong when we face the challenges that we have in education. So I would ask that you take that into consideration as you make your decisions.
Any other comment? Command motion to close nominations. Is someone up? All those in favor of closing nominations, please raise your hand. This time then, we'll vote on the candidates. All those in favor of Tim as vice president, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Lori? Looks like Lori will be vice president for the upcoming school year. Thank you, Tim, for your interest. At this time, we'd like to present Jean Affleck with recognition of her year of service.
Jean, I'm glad that Dr. Edith is unable to be here tonight. The rest of the board, the administration, and the staff at this school want to thank you for your years of service as Board of Education president. You did a phenomenal job.
Thank you all very much. I really, I think I said everything that I wanted to say, but I really appreciate. One of the best things about being on this board is being able to serve with all of you. I really want to know and appreciate all of you as best friends. Thank you.
Makes you want to thank Jean for her tremendous work that she's done, who's spent a lot of time, and has the ability and takes advantage of the ability to attend many of the state meetings that some of the residents cannot. So the Garden City is well represented at the state level, and I appreciate her doing that, and have asked her to carry on with that as the representative, because she does have the ability to be there. It makes a good strong presentation. At this time, we'd like to recognize Mr. Billbury. Mr. Ben John.
Pat Benjohns here. He's our Future Farmers of America sponsor at the high school. And Lindy is no longer a student at Garden City High School. She's actually a graduate, and we're proud to be able to point to, and happy that we're going to be able to recognize her tonight. And Mr. Benjohns has the details.
I'm going to introduce her to you tonight. I feel like we're getting reintroduced back in May twenty-seventh, when we headed to Manhattan to go to the convention, and she had a contest to do as a running for state officer. I don't think, at least I didn't, I didn't realize, I don't know that her parents did either, that they weren't going to see this young lady for a while. Our chapter was chartered in nineteen twenty-nine, and she will be the eighth person that we've had as a state officer, the third president. They tend to come from the south, so I don't know south of our area here. So she also qualified, will compete at National Again for the fourth time in a row, and represent Garden City in a job interview contest. Melissa Insley and myself couldn't be more proud of her. Four years ago, when she told us she might want to be an officer, remember, we told her that she needed to start running then, and she did. And on Friday, May thirty-first, right? Is that the right date? She was elected and named to the state at the state president. So, Danny Billbury.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for all the opportunities that it provided to myself and our chapter. Without your support, it wouldn't have been possible. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity. I'm really excited to, after leaving this community, have the opportunity to represent our school district, our community, and just all of you, and certainly members of our state. So thank you for the opportunities that you've provided me, and I'm excited to serve you. Thank you.
There's so many, there's so many egg makers that tell you.
Then where are your plans after college? Okay, well, I plan to head to K-State this fall, and I'll be studying agriculture after K-State. I don't know what the future will hold for me for sure. I hope to return to this area. If you want to be in agriculture, I feel like that this area is really the place to be, and there's so much industry and so many opportunities for people, especially my age to be good. I'm not really sure what I want to get into yet, hopefully something with livestock. I guess I'll figure that out in the next four years.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Then I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, name generally, please raise your hand. Opposed? Looks like we'll be going with unfinished business and additional discussions of the five-year strategic plan.
You should have received electronically a number of times the three initiatives that have been in some phase of discussion probably since late March or April regarding the district's five-year plan. Tonight, we want to focus on the third board initiative, goals six, seven, and eight. And I'll go through these briefly, but certainly the purpose of the discussion tonight is if you have some feedback that you wish to provide. This is the first time the board's really talked about the third initiative. We would welcome your feedback and direction. First thing, you'll notice that we originally had a goal six, seven, eight, and nine on our earlier draft. Basically, goals seven and eight were somewhat redundant, so the subgoals that were listed under eight, we've moved under seven and just had it consolidated. So we produced a goal, but really not given here as some of the subgoals. Goal six, provide safety here at Wellness and Learning Environments. Continue to evaluate and improve security plan that continues to be an ongoing process in the district. Subgoal six point two, continue to evaluate and improve an ongoing capital maintenance program to ensure clean, safe environments. Again, that's something that I think in our district, our district has a long history of providing quality facilities for students and staff. Goal six point three, evaluate and coordinate communication between Garden City Police Department and Garden City Public Schools. That's something that becomes ever increasingly important, also something that we continue to strive to work with those agencies and other community agencies to ensure we're maximizing the use of our community resources. And goal six, subgoal six four, principals should be encouraged by students, staff, and community members to use the school physical activity facilities outside of normal school day. We continue to work with, through our wellness programs, campuses, wellness throughout the influence we have, and continue to work with various agencies in the community to make use of our facility. I should go back and highlight that this initiative really focuses on efficiency, safety, and the infrastructure of the district, so you'll find an emphasis in the chase towards that. Goal seven is to improve our operational processes to be efficient, supportive, and cost-effective. Goal seven one deals with reviewing our current energy plan. A number of years ago in the district, we focused extensively on energy, worked with the company to help do ongoing audits, revise our policies, and really, I think substantially impacted costs for energy in the district. Kathleen, how long was that? Ten or twelve years ago?
Oh, I'd say about ten years ago.
About ten years ago. And I think it may just be time to kind of refresh that. I was just talking to Alex before the meeting. There's new technologies that are available that could have an impact on that, and it may just be time again for us to remind ourselves we need to be as energy conscious as possible. Costs are going up, and funds are becoming more and more scarce, so. Goal seven two, investigate the efficiency of operating eleven elementary schools. We, when we did our long-range facilities plan, it potentially provides some flexibility that we didn't have before in terms of our number of elementary classrooms that are available district-wide, and we'll have to evaluate that with our enrollment. But five years ago, we were scrambling for space. We may have some flexibility today that we didn't have five years ago, and every building we operate obviously costs, it costs dollars to operate the more buildings we have. Item seven three is to evaluate the elementary intermediate middle school configurations to determine if reorganization would lead to increased efficiency and student achievement. Here, we're talking about our organizational plan of pre-K, K four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, twelve. It becomes a cost issue, but more importantly, what's best for student achievement in terms of our organizational plan. So that's something that we did take a look at probably five or six years ago, and maybe more recently than that, but we elected to stay with our current configuration. That may be the best scenario possible, but it may also be worth we investigating. Subgoal seven four is an issue that's, the high schools dabbled in a little bit, and that is the block scheduling concept. Is block scheduling best, or is it traditional schedule best? We've been block scheduling for probably sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years, maybe upwards of that a little bit. There's advantages, there's disadvantages, and we feel like that's, needs to be a priority moving forward to make sure that that's still the best environment for students at the high school level. Steve?
Answer the question.
Jump right in.
Okay, thank you. On that one, we investigate that difference between block scheduling versus a seven-period day. That also is an issue that factors into our conversations on school calendar, does it not?
It could have some implications for school calendar, and also it could have some implications for negotiations. And this would be an item that could have a profound impact there, but I think we need to really look at that from an instructional standpoint and determine what we believe is the best environment, and then if we don't feel like we have the best environment, then we'll need to strategize for how we can move towards having that best environment. But yeah, it'll have a ripple effect.
Because we have a number of these have that sort of context within the other goals.
Exactly.
Are we going to review these with you and then come back and discuss if that's the strategy?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be, should the board approve these items? These will be things that we will be working towards, and there will be ongoing narratives that we'll be coming back to the board regularly for you to say, yeah, you're headed the right direction. No, we need to shift ninety degrees here. Board wants to move this way, so this will be an ongoing process.
Are the scheduling models that you're looking at, are those the only two that are possible? I mean, are we limiting ourselves? Maybe there's something that I'm aware of that is not block and not seven-period day. I mean, should we open that up to be more expansive?
Yeah, and I think what was intended here is that those were just listed as examples. Yeah, you're exactly right. There are many other models that are out there, and I don't believe we intend here to limit to those two. Those should be an E G here and I E in front of those.
I did have a question on seven two and seven three. It appears to me that you're sort of focusing on some different aspects of this school issue, but I was wondering if seven two should really maybe also include two intermediate and two middle schools, if you're looking at that efficiency of operation issue at those levels as well, rather than just focusing on the elementary level.
Do you want to look at it a little bit more, like investigate the efficiency of operating the number of buildings that the district has? Because you could really look at that from everywhere, including our bus barn. You know, is that in the right location, et cetera? So instead of just elementary schools, I should say, you know, give the bigger picture.
And one of the specific goals, of course, that we have is in seven point three, efficiency of student achievement, of seeing student achievement. And so I think that factors in heavily. I don't know how you want to word that in your subgoals as a board. But for instance, investigate the efficiency of operating eleven elementary schools in that consistent seven point three. But then you get into, oh, yeah, which ones do you reference and not reference? But I had that same kind of initial read, and well, you could pretty, get pretty efficient at operating buildings. Your goal is to operate. So student achievement needs to be the number one tag in an environmental organization plan that is most likely to result in student achievement.
I agree with the, what you have, all those, we're going to evaluate efficiency, let's look at all buildings.
Energy efficiency. Transformation efficiency. Getting out of the climate, a lot of things.
Good thinking.
I'm glad you have five years, because these are some floppy goals.
I guess my next question to kind of follow up with that is if we're broadening and out, so it's not just operating eleven elementary schools? I mean, because we're talking about efficiency, which we really need to have, seven point three, or if we broaden seven point two, that becomes what we're looking at, or broadening it in a way so it combines it? I mean, I know, you mentioned this, but it is relatively recent where we've had some sort of committee evaluating whether or not we wanted to go to more traditional K six and then seven and eight, and maybe seven to nine type of thing, and it needs to be determined by that committee to leave things out of the way due to the cost, because not only are we going to have to fix, you know, restrooms, because their immediate center's restrooms won't fit a kindergartner, but you're also having to change libraries and adding books and everything. It was just not cost-efficient based off of their review, and that was just within like the last couple of years that we had that committee, I believe.
I thought it was less than that.
Around the transition.
It's been within the last five years.
Okay. So, and that's why I was wondering if maybe if you combined them, we're still leaving that open, because this is a five-year goal, so it's something that we can be working on, but do we need to get that much of a focus? I still consider that relatively recent history, so maybe I'm wrong.
I think that was done probably a year prior to the bond election, because that decision was made prior to the bond election, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was made prior to the boundaries study, but I think it was made after the bond issue. I could be wrong.
Well, we'll look and find for sure what happens then, but yeah, I think that's a possibility to combine those.
Yeah, you could just add building utilization to the end of the seven point three, increased efficiency, student achievement, and middle utilization.
As long as it doesn't break the configuration, I think that is going to be, that's almost a first decision if we decide on the buildings.
Seven five deals with certified teacher and administrator evaluation processes. That again is an ongoing process and certainly important. We know that having the best teachers in front of our kids is the most important thing that indicates, leads to student achievement in those classrooms, and so that evaluation process that helps teachers and administrators grow is important this year. That was, some changes were kind of pushed out as by changes at the state level, and we're in the process of implementing those, but that is an ongoing process. we're in the process of implementing those, but that is, that is an ongoing process that we will continue to work towards.
Steve, ask a question. You know, compliant with state and federal expectations. The state, you just mentioned, pushed on some procedural things. Is it getting something down with the federal government, or the feds kind of work through the state board of education and then we give it to them?
In terms of teacher evaluation, the changes that the state is requiring are a result of the waiver that they requested from the federal government. So yeah, there is definitely a trickle-down effect there. The changes most specifically, our evaluation system, I think, was adopted originally in, like, nineteen ninety-seven, and really was light-years ahead of what most districts were doing. Of the, of the six things that the state required districts' teacher evaluation systems to be compliant with, our old system, our system a year ago met five of those. The one that we didn't meet was a component that involved student achievement and teacher evaluation. And our evaluation committee has met, or also something that's been ratified through the negotiations process. I think it's, it's an improvement over what we had. So I think that the change is, is positive, but it is, you know, it is gonna involve us doing some things a little bit differently. It's gonna be another way for teachers to self-reflect, and for administrators to provide feedback in teaching practice. But it, it will comply with the state federal requirements.
And one other question, I think I know how the evaluation process for board members works, but for administrators sort of in-between there, are there any regulations being pushed down on us to evaluate administrators?
Not, not as specific as what has been required for teachers, but we have, we made a change. We piloted the state's suggested administrator evaluation protocol last year. There were some good things that we essentially stolen from what the state was providing, and there were some things that were technically just didn't work well. So we've, we've kind of created a hybrid system, and we'll be meeting with some administrators, and some of us from the central office to finalize that. But our administrator evaluation will look much more like our teacher evaluation system does this coming year than it did three years ago. So we're seeing progress in that area as well, and we'll roll that out with administrators as far as.
Since this is a five-year plan, do we want to limit it to certified teachers and administration? Or do we want to also see our, some of our classified staff, like our parents, also seeing some of the same things that our teachers are being evaluated for as well, because they're a large part of what the teachers are going to be doing? Now, you kind of see one of their forms, if they have a form, but do we want to try to incorporate that as well?
I'm not opposed to broadening it and us taking a look at it. I don't know that we see a need right now to, to go there, but you're right, Laura, identified your plan, and it doesn't hurt to say we might look at it as long as the board understands that looking at it may result in not making any changes, have the board feel strongly that there needs to be changes there. But at this point, I don't know that we see, we see a need, you know, to make any.
Is there, is there any evaluation process in place now?
For our classified employees, absolutely, yes. Annual, there's an annual, every employee in the district gets an annual evaluation. There's a defined process for every category.
I think Laura has a good point. I think it would be good to include that level, so we have all staff covered. I think it's important, and I think, like you said, Dr. Carl, and I think that most likely will be evaluated and the regulation will be, will be changed, but let's look at it. And do you feel like, you know, we've, we've kind of focused on that line item as the evaluation process, but do you feel like the recruitment process is where it needs to be to get competitive teacher skill development? Or is that something that you think would be a separate item completely and not part of the goals?
That recruitment certainly could be included. And I thought we had, at one point, I thought we got one of our sub-goals.
Maybe it was on an earlier one. I just know that I think, I think the recruitment process is.
Two-point-two. Increase the number and percentage of highly qualified teaching staff.
Got it.
Recruit in the public following that.
Yeah.
Goal eight deals primarily with technology, providing ongoing effective technology applications to improve efficiency, instruction, and learning. Sub-goal eight-one, investigate newly available software technology and equipment, continue to estimate the status of students. Again, I think that's something that's been going on in the district for, I might be a little biased there, but I think that's been going on for a little while, and has continued, and will continue to be a priority. Continue to maintain and improve the technology infrastructure. That's sub-goal eight-two. And sub-goal eight-three is continue to provide expand quality technology training to staff. And I think anybody that you talk to in terms of effective technology implementation at school district is gonna tell you that training and staff development has to be a key component to whatever initiative, however you're trying to apply these technologies.
Would you consider line item eight-point-three to consider the possibility of expanding personnel in that area? I just don't know if we have the staff to provide enough training, the training that our staff needs. And I don't, it's sad that we have this technology in our teachers' hands and our students' hands, but yet they don't know how to access or utilize the technology to its capacity.
Right. Yeah, I would say in terms of the training of staff, that's certainly gonna be something that will apply.
I don't want to override program motion, and I know that's an important process, but the idea that that department has been charged to accomplish, it seems like a pretty sloppy goal.
Any else?
Other feedback?
Another topic?
Sort of peripheral, I don't know if it relates directly to this, but at the bottom there, it got listed, department ledges. Do we have goals developed by those departments that are set for themselves?
These are basically coming with input from the departments, and the next step in this will be, we'll bring this back to you for kind of a final comment period wrap-up of the three initiatives at the next meeting. And I believe Dr. Ait is planning on sharing a format of how we can kind of report on this to you, where you can kind of see at a glance which of these we're making progress in, when that progress was made, that kind of thing. And out to, to the side of each sub-goal will be listed the departments who are responsible, primarily responsible for those particular goals.
My question relates more towards, well, let me use an example. Let's say the music department, band program. You know, if you've got one, if we've cut back there, which we have, and you've got a certain notion of successful band program, you'd be able to say that particular academy or that high school. But you don't have the staff, you don't have the resources, you know, Gartney High School gets twos consistently, say, for example, at Dodge and Ligo in months. What is it about our program that is either substandard or, you know, it's that kind of thinking that I presume that the, in my example, Gartney High School principal and others working in that particular program work through. But at some point in time, if it's a resource problem, that comes up to administrators and, but it would be, I would think, to address a goal. Like in that example, simple one, let's make ones at festival or whatever it is they go to. I'm just asking, is there a process where individual academies set goals? And because that would be helpful to see how those fit into these.
And I think, Mark, that's probably been more done at the building level, and probably would be an issue that would work more to program budgeting. I think the, the high school is, they have a lot of autonomy in terms of how they use the resources, the budget dollars, and the resources they have at their disposal, when there's something that's beyond what they can manage or maybe accomplish with the resources that, that they have at their disposal through their traditional budget. They have the option to request additional, additional money, additional resources, whatever that might be. And once in a while, those kind of things might come aboard in form of a, of a new program. You know, maybe a, a new program like when we instituted JROTC. Okay, that was a program that wasn't able to, wouldn't have been able to be started just within the resources that existed at the high school at the time. So the board looked at that and said, this is a, this is a program that if we want to do it, we're gonna have to invest in it, and here's what that investment will look like.
Things like math and reading, we get feedback on scores, we get data up to this level. I'm just curious about some of those other programs that's out there in the, in the workings of the individual building. But when we're looking at efficiencies here, you know, as far as infrastructure, I'm just wondering how those fit. And you're, I hear you communicate, Steve, that the notion is that they, they work from this at the building level and then make their recommendations. And I've only gone through, say, the budgeting process once, but what I saw of that was simply if you had ninety percent of your current budget, how would you address that? Or if you had a hundred percent, or a hundred and two percent? But that doesn't really speak to some of those potential goals and struggles to meet those goals. And so I'm just curious how that dovetails together. Right now, I, I see it as simply dealt with between the building and central administration.
All right. Just trying to understand what you're saying, Mark. Sounds, mainly what I picture is the building, the band, the math department, the law, their individual goals, dovetail into the building, which.
The academies.
The academies. But all build up to these goals, and yes, the budgeting plays into it because ultimately that's what will determine what, where we can make our investments. And that's, at least at times like a monthly program budget, that's their opportunity to put the input, okay, to move the needle with the band, we want to do this, or move the needle with drama department, we need to do this, and that.
I'm trying to, in my mind, kind of work through, Tom, how we take some of these initiatives of, you know, that are, that are at the building level of trying to improve our instruction. We've got the broader goals, but within the professional communities and the MTSS, a lot of that happens in those local groups. And to a certain extent, I would expect that to yield some goals, saying, look, here's what I get done. Boy, if we just had X, Y, or Z, either person, or scheduled time, or building, or, you know. So somehow that need for resources gets communicated to the building, leadership to the principal, and then on up into the administration. And then maybe we'll see it, or maybe we won't. But we're sitting here with some board goals, and they're, this is great, I think this is just good stuff. It's five-year goals. I'm just kind of curious to what extent it sort of dovetails. Right now, it comes into the, into the workings of the administrators and central office that gets communicated to us either directly, like technology here, that program. Now we've got specific goals on that, that relate directly to that program. We don't necessarily, no, I think we've got goals on every one of these things, like nutrition services, it's kind of nice that it's self-supported. I know that that's a goal, but you know how that works. Human resources, that's a process, the business side of things in the budget, we touched that directly, we give reports on special ed. I'm, I'm just kind of curious, we set goals, but there's some internal goals that maybe could be communicated to us to help us think through some of these other things. It's just, I'm just trying to process it myself. There's already a process there than I'm asking.
I think this is macro view, and I think what you're looking at is more of a micro view of, of a smaller subgroup of students, interest achievement, et cetera. So I think what, what Dr. Carl and I talked about saying was that, you know, what happens with fan and drama is gonna happen more at that building location. I don't know if it necessarily directly connects to this, but it indirectly does because of, relevant this covers.
Yeah, we don't want to, my thought is we don't want to discourage intrapreneurship, you know, where they make it work, particularly if they just had that one other item, and I presume they convey that up the line.
And we have processes in place, there's a, if they need equipment or furniture, there's a way for them to request, like those types of supplies that they need, through program budgeting, they can request and reallocate dollars with them, a building for different programs if they need, you know, this is the year they've got to replenish chemicals in the science area, they may have ways to manipulate their budget through, through budget process. They also have a way to request additional personnel if they want to request additional personnel. Now, unfortunately, you know, we went through probably four or five of the toughest years we've had financially, and we might have a little bit of the attitude out there understandably where, where people say, well, I'm not gonna request because I know what the answer's gonna be. When we're, when we're cutting over here, we're probably not gonna be adding over here when the dollars just aren't there. And we, you know, we get back to that, we hear that the funding is staying leveled from the state, but we all, we all get an electric bill at home and know that the electric bill, even though I use less energy, my bill is still higher because the cost of that energy went up. So staying the same doesn't translate into just shuffling things around. And so the, the processes are in place for people to, to communicate the support that they need to improve their programs, but I can't think of a more difficult four or five years that we've had in terms of encouraging people to build programs with more resources. We've had to adopt the attitude of, and I hate it because I don't think, I'm a, I'm a science guy, you can't do more with less. There's a, there's a law about the conservation of matter. If you don't have more or less, you have the same. That's the way it works. But that's, that's the attitude that's prevalent out there, is you have to figure out a way to do more with the same or less. So I think, Mark, some of what you're talking about, the mechanisms are in place to do that, but the reality of the economic situation today is we haven't been able to do much of that because of the economics.
Well, again, the conversation here is in the context of the five-year plan, should not have a next-year plan. And so my question is, is there a five-year strategic thinking process at the building level and the program level? Because if we're gonna build something beyond our limitations for next year, we have to think in those terms at the local level, too. And of course, that's where all of our good instruction occurs.
One of the things building on what, what you have mentioned, that.